I'd like to call the May 8th Meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order, and I would like to welcome all of you in attendance. I have a little bit of a smaller crowd than what the last few months have been, but again, I'd like to welcome all of you. There's probably a little bit of angst and excitement up here as it's election day, so we'll try and keep focused and try and get us all out of here as quickly as possible. I know the media would probably be downstairs watching that results come in.
You can't until 7:30 anyway.
Okay. Any announcements, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
I would like to just make one quick one. Last Friday, I don't know if all you gentlemen had the same quantity of phone calls that I've had from members that have been going to attend our senior services facility, but I decided it was time for me to go business. So I made a phone call down and set up a little time and was able to speak and tour the facility from, they were having bingo today, so I was able to tour that and tour adult daycare. And I hate to admit it, as Chairman of this board, but I will, I was in awe at how busy they were. I had to circle the parking lot twice, look in parking, that type of thing. And I was enamored with how many volunteers that give up their time literally on a daily basis to help that facility function along. It's good, and I would encourage my fellow commissioners, if any of you have a chance, I think it's eye opening, it was for me. Just go take a 30-minute tour of that facility during the work week and see what's happening. And I understand there are phone calls now and why they're saying they need a, they need some expansion, they need some larger facility, and I'll definitely be a proponent of that moving forward. Anything else? Call, rise, we'll have a moment of silence, and I'll ask Commissioner Shields, please, and the pledge of allegiance.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no public hearings tonight, public comment period. I have the sheet here, no one has signed up. Does anybody would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I was supposed to.
Come on, Mr. Congressman, welcome.
Yes, my name is Patrick, AKA Kip Melon, and I'm here representing the veterans of Macon County. I have something I'd like to introduce to you. This is the National Veterans Wheelchair Games. This is happening in Orlando, Florida, the 29th of August till the 4th of August. What this consists of is Vietnam veterans, it's, first of all, it's brought on by the paralyzed American veterans in cooperation. And these are games that are competitive games for people with disabilities, such as amputees, multiple sclerosis, and several other things. I'm going to be representing Macon County at these, and I thought it was important that you gentlemen knew about it and ladies. And we'll be competing against people of my own age and my own disabilities. Now, they compete in, so that everything's a fair table. They compete in bowling, skeet shooting, rifle shooting, pistol shooting, basketball, weightlifting, a variety of things that you can do with this. Well, I thought that this would be, this is the first time this is happening in Macon County, to my knowledge. And I thought that it would bring it into your attention, would also help veterans in the community and also the citizens of the community to know that we're involved in something like this. And I'm lost my train of thought.
We're happy, happy you're going. What events are you going to be competing in?
Big part.
What event or events are you going to?
Oh, I will be in rifle shoot, bowling, nine-ball tournament, and what they call motorized rally.
Okay.
In a motorized wheelchair, and you have to go so much of an obstacle course, and there'll be stops, they ask you a trivia question and give you a card. So you can either win it by your best time, win it for trivia, or your best poker hand. I'm really excited about this, and I'm so looking forward to it. Now, the VFW Post 7339 has gave me the money for my motel room for this, and the Vietnam veterans has given me some spending money, or eating money more or less. I'm driving, my grandson's going with me as my caretaker, and I just thought you gentlemen would like to know.
I'm glad you shared that with us.
What we're, what we're trying to do in here and get these.
We're excited for it.
Get us a little more know the ride.
Right. I don't want to tell the papers much, they'd have to be a good little article. Well, thank you, we expect.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Got a couple of questions. Can I get you to spell your last name for us?
M.I.L.N.E.
M.I.L. Okay, we expect three, at least three gold medals.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Well, we're behind you.
All right.
We're behind you. And thank you for taking your time to come tell us.
Thank you, sir.
All right, appreciate it, thanks very much.
Good luck.
You mentioned August, you said? August?
Yes. No, July 29th, August 4th.
Okay.
It's a seven-day event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, come on, brother.
Nice to see you here.
See you, brother.
Anyone else who wants to speak? Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I've got a couple. Just briefly, there had been a request to prepare a resolution and a proposed local bill in connection with spotlighting, and I had prepared that. I would ask that Mr. Commissioner Carpenter is here to speak on behalf of that. If there's a way to get him closer to the top of the agenda, I would ask that that be moved up.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have a problem moving that to 11A minus? For wanting to do new business?
And I brought to you some documents. The Department of Transportation is seeking to acquire temporary construction easement and temporary drainage easement in the vicinity of Robert C. Carpenter Building in connection with the improvements to the entrance to the Robert C. Carpenter Building. And the drainage easement is down closer to the, I guess that's, is it the Ag or the?
Yeah.
Fairgrounds.
Move that to 11H?
The work is here, and you just, it can go anywhere.
Anything else, Lori?
Just one short item. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jim Rutner will present, we're going to be asking for a grant for a no wrong door. It's a system of navigation and telepsychiatry initiative that we started in the county, and we'll be asking for grant money, and Mr. Rutner is going to, would like to present that before the board.
Do you want to just attach that to 11A?
That'd be great.
I get a motion to approve the agenda? Motion approved in a second. Commissioner Shields, all in favor? Any reports or presentations, nothing left, just move on to whole business. Second reading on revised annual control amendments.
Gentlemen, at the last meeting, we had three members of the board of commissioners present, two absent. The three that were here all voted in favor of adopting that amendment, but the statute requires that all members of the commissioners must vote for that in order for it to pass on the first presentation. So we're presenting it the second time for the full board's consideration with all five members present.
Unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion to approve this. Motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Our whole business, Tim B., consideration of amendment to the Coliseum Community Association. Commissioner Bill, go ahead.
Yes, gentlemen, Mr. Bill had approached me about the need for a second amendment to the recreation opportunities agreement with the Coliseum Community Association. They had some money left over from the construction project that they had had approved by this board. They put that money to good use, is my understanding, that they would like to be able to use the balance of that, that money in order to do some repair and restoration work in the kitchen and bathroom and to underpin that building. Is that correct, Mr. Bill?
That's right. They, gentlemen, these folks have done an excellent job with the money from the Macon County citizens to restore this historic building. They've just done an outstanding job. It's been a great community project, they've watched every dollar. They do have a little money left, and they'd like to, as the attorney said, put it into the, upgrade the bathroom and the kitchen and do some underpinning. And they think they have enough of what they've raised to do those three things. So I would ask, I would make a motion to approve this request from the, from the folks up there in Coliseum.
I would, would point out to the board that the amendment agreement contemplates the additional sum or approximate sum of $10,000, but just by, advised by the finance officer that the actual amount that's been saved is $11,621.50. Would the board want to approve that full balance and have me make that change to this agreement?
I would certainly change my motion, Mr. Chairman, to reflect that. He will take all that money and more to do what they want to do to finish up the building. If you have a chance, gentlemen, please go by and see what, what this community has done with this building, and I think you'll be much impressed. And if we can get with some of the monies that they have, that they will need all the money to finish these three projects.
We were guesstimating that there was $10,000 less. As it turns out, there's a little bit more.
All right, I think we have a motion on the floor. Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Discussion, consideration of renewal of lease agreement for the gazebo property with the town of Franklin. Mr. Chairman?
Gentlemen, at the last meeting, you had brought to your attention the desire of the town to renew the gazebo property. I had sent each of you some comments that I had regarding some changes I felt needed to be made to the document that was presented. I believe Mr. Bill raised the question of whether or not that property could be used for the consumption of alcohol. I will report to you that the revised lease proposal, which is contained in your agenda package, incorporates all of the changes that I recommended to the county, and it also provides that there shall be no consumption of alcoholic beverages on the lease premises. If that puts you in a situation where you're able to move forward with that lease, then you could certainly approve that this evening. If you need to discuss it further, then that can certainly happen.
Discussion, motion?
That was my only concern, Mr. Chairman, was just that county-owned property, and of course, we have ordinance of alcoholic county-owned property. At that time, the town was talking about having some events that included that, so that was a concern.
Any other concerns or questions, Chairman?
Did you talk, was any discussions in regards to the county being able to use that property while it's being leased or taken?
I've had no discussions concerning that. That will have to be on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, if there's a problem with that, then the county certainly is in a position to terminate the lease.
That's a 30-day, what was it?
It's a 180.
We get a motion or we talk about that a little more?
Make a motion.
Well, depends as presented.
Would change, would second. Any further discussion? Commissioner, are you comfortable with it? All in favor? I'm moving on to new business, spotlighting resolution. I think this, I was in by teleconference, and I heard that, and I've also received some emails and discussion from concerned citizens about this problem. Our local game warden, Mr. Mickey Carpenter, is here. Mickey, could you give us just a little brief history on that? You hear it a lot more firsthand than we do. I catch it secondhand.
Yes. I'm Mickey Carpenter, I'm a local game warden here in Macon County. Currently, the way the law is written, if I approach, if I stop a vehicle, somebody that's spotlighting a field, and I suspect them for not deer hunting, if I stop them and approach them, and they say that they're coyote hunting, there's nothing I can do. It's the state I'm in right now, based on the law says that you can spotlight coyotes at night. The danger with that is, whenever somebody's driving down the road to the spotlight, they don't know what's beyond their target from that point. For instance, Cherokee County, they had a house shot by somebody doing that. Said they were, they were hunting feral swine at night, shot, went to the, threw a house, actually struck about six inches above a little boy's head, and hit him late in bed. So that's the dangers that we're looking at. But what I would suggest would be to do something as far as helping with, with that. Right now, my hands are tied with it, just like some of the citizens have said. I heard what they, some of the things they had said. If I stop them, they just say they're coyote hunting. They go on their way, they go to another part of the county where I'm not, because at that time, they know where I'm at. They go to another part of the county, and they start shooting and putting citizens in danger at that time.
Thank you. Just for a minute, go ahead, we got to please.
Do you have to have a landowner's permission to spot on their land?
Currently, you do not.
Now, Mickey, I was reading Cherokee's, Cherokee County's law. Now, the way I understand it, that's an ordinance?
Yeah, theirs is an ordinance, and there's questionable enforceability. I've talked with the folks at the State Wildlife Resources Commission, and they are in accord with my opinion that this needs to be done by local bill. As a consequence, I've prepared a resolution with a proposed local bill attached to it. If the commissioners are, desire to move forward with this, they would need to adopt that resolution, and then we would in need term to, need to forward this on to one of our representatives.
I spoke with Representative Corbin about this, about the problem. He said he'd be happy to carry the weight, and that was our wish.
Mickey, you read, of course, you know Cherokee's.
Yes.
So ours is a little different, not much, from that, but that, would that cover you, the way Cherokee's is written?
Yes. Like you said, the difference with the ordinance, right now, we can't enforce. We can't, we can't enforce local ordinance, since we can only do state law. So that's where we're at right now. They're actually going to have to go through and renew theirs as well.
The, the long and short of it is, is Wildlife Resources Commission will only enforce state law. And some real question about whether the state law preempts the county's ability to enact an ordinance. So the local bill is the way to proceed. Mickey Carpenter was kind enough to help me find a local bill that he felt would, would work. We looked, I believe it was at Rockingham County?
Yes, sir.
Rockingham County's local bill. We, we essentially took it and changed some dates and the county name. So we know that's one that the legislature has been willing to pass.
And it basically says that you cannot spotlight from local right-of-ways, roads or right-of-ways. As it say, you can't do it from your own property.
30 minutes before?
30 minutes after sunset to 30 minutes before sunrise.
Mickey, I know our local coon hunters club is probably one of the largest hunting organizations in this county, and my understanding is, have you heard it differently, that when we talked about this three months ago, I guess, that they had signed a letter of support from their club?
Yes. Supporting this. Absolutely. Their concern was that somebody going down the road, spotlighting a field, may shine their dog and shoot their hunting, hunting dog. That's what their concern was when I spoke with them. So they were in full support of it.
Why does the state not do a blanket?
Reason the state hadn't done that, they don't want to have for coyote hunting, like down, down east, and hog hunting. It's big down there, so it's not as big up here. Legitimately, coyote hunters, I've, I've checked maybe two, where most time I'm stopping somebody, they're saying, "I'm coyote hunting," where legitimately, they're not deer hunting. Because in my line of work, I see a lot of people, a lot of coyotes on the road and things like that. If you put a spotlight on a coyote, it's gone, you're not going to have opportunity to shoot it. Where a deer, it's going to stand there for you to shoot it. And that's the reason that they do that. As far as, is the state doing a whole blanket? That's about all I've got, I'm going to be honest with you.
It would be more consistent and easier to enforce as an amount of opportunity to...
Yeah, and you, another thing, I kind of compare it to the shining law, for instance. Graham County, you spotlight all night long in Graham County. It's based on the county that's supported that. Just like road hunting, you'd think they would have a blanket for the whole state, but they leave it up to the county. Where Macon County has a road hunting law, Swain County does not. Graham County does not. So you can go out and shoot animals from the middle of the roadway if you want to over there. Where in Macon County you can't. So...
Jackson County specifies deer in their, in their law, in their shining law. Their law says unlawful to shine intentionally upon a deer or in search of a deer between high fire, sunset, and high fire before sunrise. But there again, if you do that, you can always say, "I was shining for..."
For coyotes.
Coyotes.
And with the way that he has it written up currently, it's not going to hurt somebody that's legitimately coyote hunting. Because somebody legitimately coyote hunting is in the field, they're not in their vehicle driving down the road and spotlighting.
On the right.
Right.
That's the key to this, where you're shining from.
If somebody's legitimately in the field shining a light, then they're going to be, they're going to be good to go. Whereas if they're driving down the field shining from their vehicle, they're driving, driving down the road, shining field, they're wrong.
Your experience, that's from up to spotlighting.
Yes, absolutely.
The people that talk to me about it, they're concerned people are spotlighting their fields with no permission. They just feel like it's, they're being a friendship bond.
Yes.
There's nothing we can do for that at this moment.
Correct. There's no, there's nothing we can do at that time, but if they're shining their field with the current bill that's wrote, if they're driving down the road and they're shining that field, I can do something at that time. Because I can, I can, I'll be able to charge them at that time with the bill that is proposed. Because I'll actually have a charge for, for spotlighting.
Spotlighting still a part of me?
Yes.
Make sure I understand, so if I'm in a public right-of-way, if I'm on my own property, if I'm in a public right-of-way, and I spotlight off of that public right-of-way across into my hayfield?
It's still exempt because it's your land.
But I'm, I'm in the public right-of-way.
But you're, actually in the bill that is proposed, it says, a current, a landowner, anybody that's not shining for, if you're shining for deer, yes, you would be. Or you're shining for a wild animal. It says in the bill that it would be for, it was exempt for landowners, camping, and normal vehicle or travel that's not intent, no intention of shining.
Protecting an animal.
Wild animals.
Okay, so if I'm, I guess, where I'm a little bit confused, is I'm sitting in a public right-of-way, and I shine my light out across the hayfield because I know I've got a coyote issue. Can you pull up?
If I, if I pull up at that time, that'll be at my discretion. And most of the time, these places that I'm working in this situation are offered, they know whose land is, who owns what land in that area. So at that time, I'll pull up and say, "How you doing, Carl?" And you say, "I'm out here looking for coyotes. I had coyotes chasing my cows." Then we'll say, "All right, have a good day." That's where our discretion would come in at that time.
And I'm going to get that tip, though.
I probably don't want you to.
I have concerns about coyotes, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's, that is a, the landowner's concern.
Yeah, landowners are exempt if you're shining on your own land.
Yep. And just like, if you shot the coyote from your vehicle, that's against state law, just like this is. If you shot the vehicle, if it was in the road and you shot the coyote from your vehicle, you'd be in violation. But if you got out of the vehicle and off the road, you're not in violation.
So today, if I shot that coyote from my vehicle?
You'd be in violation.
I would violate. What, coyote from my vehicle?
Yep.
Any in the right way?
Well, actually, Macon County law says in the right-of-way, right now, is deer is the only thing you can't shoot from the road with, in Macon County.
Deer.
Deer, specifically deer in Macon County.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the comments. I'll admit, say right up front, I'm personally in favor of this. I've heard the complaints and the safety problems. I don't really see any harm with this at all, but if you gentlemen would like to smoke it over for another month, I understand. I'm ready to move forward with what anybody else says. Is there a motion? You want to smoke it over?
I didn't act in time either, here he is.
I don't want to take 30 days.
I understand the concern with it. And in our community, we, we've experienced the spotlight and finding part of the park is, well, I don't, I can find part of the park is, you know, very good job. But I guess my hesitation just a little bit is involving the cat and understanding what we face there. That, that mile is concerned, and that might not be a good precaution, but we have a reservation there, everybody can get on their own good foot.
Paul? Somebody else?
The people that's talked to me, they just felt like, that people were spotlighting on their property, and they just felt like that was some friends that they should have to have permission. If you're going to spotlight the roadway or somewhere like that, you're on the spotlight on my property, you should have my permission. And I'm not sure this is addressed in here, is that it?
It's not directly addressed in it, no. I think to the extent that they spotlight on your property, and then they kill an animal on your property and go on your property, then, then there's some civil responsibility of trespass in that situation. And if it's posted, I think there could be some criminal responsibility as well. But the shining of light on your property would not be considered trespass.
But odds are they're shining from the road. If you talk to those folks, you know, I make you a fine ask. Some people that are shining are shining from the road. And I hope I have the mentality to understand that they're shining and not, and may not feel like they're looking for me or something.
Yeah.
I hope I can have the sound mind not want to shoot their light out.
Can we get a motion to pass this resolution? If we get a motion to pass this resolution, we'll send it on to our state.
I'd be happy to make the motion, just trying to hit, because now is more important than ever. You hear Officer Carlton talk about, because it's not like it used to be, the deer is in the neighborhoods now.
Yeah.
They're lower and lower and lower. Everywhere you go, there's deer. I don't, usually we'd have to go to the stand, they had a warrior. No more. They're down in the neighborhoods. And that's why this is so important. With that, if you said that Representative Corbin will carry the water on, that's the main thing. What does Senator Davis?
I've not spoken again.
But I think as a county, that is, this is, with the amount of deer that we have now and where they're at, I mean, like we call them, we have the Clark's Chapel folks, such a problem there. If you've got somebody shining through the other houses everywhere now, so it's a safety issue, pure and simple. And to give the authority to these folks that's out there overnight, trying to catch these folks, so I'd be happy to make the motion, we pass the resolution, especially.
Got a motion for more in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Go catch somebody.
Thank you, Mickey.
You've got a deer shining. They see that sign and don't turn.
All right. Eleven, A plus. Public health fiscal year 2018-19 billing and collection policies and fee schedules. Public health director, Mr. Jim Rupp. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. And thank you for having that grant in there for us tonight. There are two documents. They both were approved at last month, last month's Board of Health meeting. One is our billing and collections policy, and the other is our fee schedule. Our billing and collections policy was already approved by the board last year. There's only two changes that were requested by the state when they came and did their audit of our billing guide, and they are on page eleven. And it's under our animal services and our informal health policies. We had to put an explanation here as how we determine those fees, and we did that. And I can read those if you want, but I know you have copies. So those are the only two changes in that document that we made. If there are any questions about the billing guide, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Board of Health is unanimous.
Board of Health is unanimous at the last meeting. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
The document verification, which, that's not changed yet. That's, you still, that's the same document we've always required.
It's the same document that's required by the state in our.
That's the state.
Contract, yeah. The primary agreement agenda that we have with the state, that's actually signed by the chair of the board, requires us to have a billing guide and a fee plan in place. And then it'd be approved annually.
You get a motion to approve?
Well, if you want to wait, you can do both at the same time. The second one is the fee plan.
Let's do this in person, since we got here. You got a motion, Commissioner Shields?
Yes, sir.
Your second. Section, Commissioner Higgins. All in favor? All right. No wrong door.
No, this is.
No, the fee plan. Yeah, that's one part. This is the second part. Yeah, I'm sorry.
As far as trying to separate.
The, the fee plan, which gets attached to the billing guide once they're both approved, there are only a couple of minor changes. And the easiest place to start is on the last page. If you want to look at the copies, the copies that you were sent have the changes in red. We have had a request from the community member to create an adoption fee specific to veterans. So we proposed that to the Board of Health at their last meeting, and they approved that. Where we'd have a set animal adoption fee of thirty-five dollars for any veteran, for, for a dog or cat. Currently, a dog is sixty-five dollars, and a cat is, where it go? No, it's sixty-five for regular adoption. It's forty-five if they're already designated. That's the one. The other one, which is, there are three lab fees that we have. We are, have requests from community members to do additional labs for our colposcopy that we do. Three of them. One is a level two, one is a level three pathology screening. One is, the level two is thirty-five dollars, the level three is, or level, yeah, level three is forty-five dollars. And the other one is an IHCA B stain. If you ask me what that is, I won't be able to tell you. I just know it's a stain that they do in the lab, and that is associated with our colposcopy, and that is a hundred and ten dollars for that fee. All of these fees were approved unanimously at the last Board of Health meeting. The rest of the fees in this document, which is about twelve, thirteen pages long here, were fees that have already been pre-approved by the Board of Health and the Board of Commissioners as well.
You got a motion to approve the fee schedule?
Next on the Board of Health approval of the motion, let's do.
Motion, Commissioner Higgins, your second. Second, Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're now wrong, no wrong.
No wrong door.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I'm sorry to bring this to you so quickly, but, or late, but I was trying to get the Commissioner Beal beforehand, and we never basically were connected. We had a community forum a few months, about a month or so ago, oops, no wrong door forum. From that forum, we synthesized every, all the information we gathered from the community and came to the conclusion that we probably need a systems navigator. That's the no wrong door portion of this, and I'll go a little more into this in a minute. But this is an Evergreen grant. The grant is for approximately sixty thousand dollars. There are some county matching funds, but they're funds that are already appropriate within the budget for the Health Department that currently go towards the mental health services that we provide. We're also doing this in partnership with Appalachian Community Services, who has an outposted licensed professional counselor at the Health Department who does behavioral health screenings and counseling for clients that we see at the Health Department. So they have some skin in the game as well. And we're also partnering with East Carolina University. They are going to purchase telepsychiatry equipment and give us three to four hours of psychiatrists' time a week, which is huge. And we'll be able to house that at the Health Department, expand capacity for telepsychiatry in the community. So in, in preparing to write that grant for telepsychiatry, we had this other meeting, and we've decided to try and pair the two of them together, because there is that matching component. And because we have the matching component for telepsychiatry, you can use that for advantage somewhat. But we have between us, Appalachian Community Services, and ECU, about a little over a hundred thousand dollars in the game, about a hundred and thirty-five actually. We're asking for sixty from Evergreen. There's two components to the grant. The telepsychiatry component would be that the individual will be hired through this grant, would basically coordinate the appointments for that telepsychiatry, would set up the equipment, would introduce the patient to the telepsychiatry unit and the psychiatrist, and then they would leave their room, they'd have their visit, and information to go back to the provider to manage their medications or whatever they're going to do. And then the person would be coming away. So this is really in about a day and a half, a week time. The other piece of this that we're looking at is the no wrong door piece. From that meeting, one of the things that we were able to glean was that we really need not a care navigator, because you hear the term care navigator all the time, but a systems navigator. We need a person or a contact placed with an individual who's well versed in the mental health system in Macon County, who can help direct people to appropriate services. So that if you have a problem, and it's either a consumer or a family member of a consumer, and you need to access the mental health system, it's the kind of go-to person. We're looking at it as similar to the Veteran Services Office, where we have an individual who coordinates and helps those people access the service. They don't get them to their appointments, but they help connect them with county transportation or whoever needs to get them there. They help connect them with whichever behavioral health or, or mental health agency that they need to be connected with. But it's one individual well versed in the system. The rest of the personnel that work there or are associated with that would be all volunteers with that office. So what I'm asking for is, I know this is a lot of information dumped on you at one time, but permission to go ahead and apply for, and when, if the funding comes available, accept the sixty thousand dollars from Evergreen to go forward with this project if we can do it.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is just the first step in this initiative. We would love to be able to do the stepping up program. The fact is, the stepping up program, we are going to apply for that grant also. We just don't hardly qualify. You can cross every T and dot every I in the stepping up program, simply because we don't have a regional facility. This is, what the no wrong door is, is mostly one of the first proactive things you'll ever see. It's, it's trying to be proactive instead of reactive. To help with a lot of things, most of these families and the people that need the help, but also, you know, we can, it does have a jail preventive part to it, if you can get to these folks in time. So with the treatment facilities to send them to, and hopefully, a lot of these folks can be, you know, they can have community outpatient care, instead of ending up in New York for days. And that's the situation we're in now, and have been for a long time. So the Health Department's done an excellent job. Who really done the work was those folks in that room that day. Mr. Glassby was there all day, and I think he can jive for that. So those ideas, that's where these ideas came from, is the folks that was in the room. And so, but I do appreciate all the work, Jim, that the folks have done at the Health Department. And this is just the first step, and I think we'll be successful in, in getting the grants. And we are, we're going to Raleigh next week to see if we give more. So we, so with that, if y'all want us to keep it ready for a little while, we need to apply for the grant. The grant cycle starts.
It's now.
Is now.
So. The sooner we get it, the better, is what they told us.
And it took a while, but we had so much information that came out of the meeting, it just took, it took a long time to put it together. And so, but we had to have the facts right. And if you read this about your county and some of the statistics, I think you'll agree that we need to be proactive somewhere. And this is one of the steps. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we need to, if we need to read it over or study it or.
Well. Ronnie.
I feel like I have a thrill which would be in that room, both of them. County manager was there. To say that it was a highly experienced, understated call, I left there with more of appreciation for a lot of folks, including our Health Director and his group. You know, I think, I think this, while I haven't had time to review this, if it's what came out of that meeting, I think I agree a hundred and ten percent, that's the first step. And if we don't get started, we'll never get there, which I know. So I, I think it's a real issue for, for Macon County, and it's, it's, it's going to continue to be. If we don't get started, we're never going to get there.
Let me ask a question that came out of that meeting that day. Is there a monetary qualification for students, or I wouldn't say students, to receive this help?
No. None whatsoever.
So if a person in the school system, a child that needs some help, some assistance here, there's not medication, there's not a block that's there?
Well, the, you have to think about this component is kind of the, it's the connector person. It's not what Appalachian charges or what Meridian charges or what a counselor, well, I don't think counselors in school, they may go, I don't know. But it's not a, it's not that component of where the people get billed for the service, or we're going to have to come up with a rationale for billing the service. However, this person will know where the IPRS dollars are, what agencies have them, and who to make the referral to, to use that state money, hopefully, to provide that service. And then it would be a service free charge to them.
Okay.
That's the objective. This is a connection point. This is, you've got to look at it just like Veteran Services, and we keep using that as an example. They don't pay for services for each, but they connect them to each.
It's a test system to navigate.
I think that's one of the things we've seen in education, students needing some assistance. Somewhere they don't qualify because of the thing that makes them its money. Is that right?
Yeah. If they, if they're beyond Medicare, Medicaid, and beyond IPRS dollars, that could be an issue or a problem.
And I think we've seen that this problem is tied to one group. I mean, it's monetarily, it fluctuates all the way through. But there's, there's another group here that may not be qualified, that, that needs help too.
And that is, that, that came out, I think there were several things that came out in that community meeting that we had, the no wrong door meeting, around affordability of service, around connecting people with the service, around jail diversion, around opioid use and opioid programs, treatment programs. All of those things were identified. This is just kind of step one for us. Those are the things we can try and focus on and tackle as we go forward, I think. I think that was what Commissioner Beal was alluding to a minute ago.
Some of those things we're going to have to, when it comes to payment, almost every provider now, the ones they see now, over sixty percent will pay that.
Is it due to their income level?
No, their, their debt, you know, that, that has nothing to do to it. They, when you're talking about someone, a student, there's other avenues to get reimbursement for a student. That's even above Medicare or Medicaid. So, but this is just, this is just the first step, Commissioner Shields, to try to get for somebody, I mean, you know how busy it is in my place with these folks, so this is the first step to get that. And, but if they need help, you know, to find some way to get them help, that's what this is all about.
And just to clarify, this is not creating a new county position, per se. This is creating a grant funded position that we would do the same way we do other grant funded positions, which would be through the association, North Carolina Association, Public Health Alliance, I think it's NCA, PHA, however they say it, but, which is basically a staffing company. So these people would be run through that staffing company until we could make sure within a year or so that we could sustain it and figure out how to sustain it, keep it in place with either additional grant funding down the road, or we'd be back here having a conversation if it really works and, and benefit the community.
That's one reason the stepping up portion, the chairman's going to be so important. It'll be ongoing. And so, we can get a commitment out of that for several years, and so, but it's just like Commissioner Glassby said, unless we start, it will go nowhere. This is the first step, really. And so, but we are going to go after that mighty soon, so we'll be working on that.
Thank you, gentlemen, for attending. Want to go ahead and make a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion that we, that we go ahead and give the Health Department full permission to seek these grants as we, as we begin this, this program for no other reason than to be proactive and not reactive in some of the situations for our families and people that need the help in our county.
Mr. Chairman, I'm enthusiastic, say that. Just have one quick comment here. I think it's pretty much gone unnoticed. And I think it's good to recognize that there's a lot of, a lot of causes out there that deserve shooting, that, that maybe don't get the attention that they do. But, you know, it takes somebody to play, and I think it just needs to be public to recognize it, not only Bill, there's no town have the hours he gives for this. And, you know, it's for safety.
You helped me with an issue last night. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you again, Jim, for everything.
Appreciate it.
Jim. All right, item eleven B, South Macon Elementary. Just want to take it toward these singularly.
As you know, the county is embarking upon assisting the school board with an addition at South Macon Elementary School. The way we have historically done that, we have held the title to those properties, allowed the school to lease those properties from us, use the property as security for loans, and in order to accomplish that, we do that through an interlocal agreement, and in this case, memorandum of lease extension and subordination agreement. Those documents are part of your agenda package. If your desires are proceeding with the, with the addition of the South Macon Elementary School, we would need the board to approve each of those documents.
All right. You want to do? You gonna, you wanna do them all at once, or?
Um, yeah, because, I mean, approving one will not get it done. We either approve them both or we don't approve any of them.
Okay. Commissioner Bill, Bill's liaisons, y'all wanna give us a motion to approve these and what?
Well, we've read two of them. Michelle and I have read through these, and this is basically the same thing, gentlemen, we've done with every expansion. It's the same, basically the same documents that we've used for the past 18 years.
Or more.
Or more, when we start to do something with a school. So, unless Michelle has something that we didn't, that we overlooked.
Move forward.
Second.
And further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. And additionally, Lori and I need for you to set a June 12, 2018 public hearing in connection with the proposed financing. So, GS 168-20 financing, must be a public hearing on it. Lori and I can proceed with preparing the records and notices.
You gonna motion to approve the public hearing?
Motion to approve the public hearing on, that's our regular meeting, right?
That's our regular meeting.
Enjoy dinner. All right, we got a motion. I'm sorry, I missed the second. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Is that at 6:00?
Yes, that'd be 6:00.
All right, item C, consideration of interlocal agreement with Southwestern Community College regarding the Public Safety Training Center.
Hey, y'all.
That's true, you're busy tonight.
Yeah, as y'all recall, y'all been in discussions with SEC about constructing a burn building. We have prepared an interlocal agreement to essentially accomplish what the parties have been discussing. Probably one of the big things in the interlocal agreement, it's, it's designed to protect the county is if and in the event the dollars are not forthcoming from the state to do this project, while we're deeding them the property to do this project, if they don't do the project, they're gonna have to do that property back to us.
Motion approved. Second.
Ask a question.
Second, any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Gentlemen, you can also note in the documents that were left for you, a general warranty deed. This is the actual deed by which that would be conveyed. I'm asking that you authorize your chairman and your clerk of board to execute that. I would respectfully ask that both the interlocal agreement and the deed be held until I advise the county manager to deliver it. There's one block that's got to be checked on, agreement to any disagreement in the county in connection with the Greenway. This property abuts the Greenway and we need to make sure that nothing in this arrangement would run afoul of those agreements with the energy.
Okay. Very good, questions? Moving on, we moved D up, so...
Do you need a motion on that?
We need an approval of that warranty deed subject to...
Motion to approve the warranty deed subject to the...
It's outlined with the attorney.
Second by Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item E, discussion regarding the dog park. Can you bring the picture up?
Yes.
Is that for the TVs on?
No, they're not.
I'll be getting it up, Mr. Chairman, if you want.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
There, it's coming.
Okay. Maybe it'll be clear.
Yes.
Do it with my mind, see.
It doesn't operate.
Small picture, small mind.
It looks like it was trying to zoom in and it just makes it very blurry.
All right, I'll, I'll give a little background on this. Mr. Slepia, I won't, I'll point the finger completely with y'all, but I'll give y'all credit for bringing it to my attention, because I've heard it from more than, more than you about our dog park near Wesley's Park. And I've toured it several times since we've had our discussion. And it's used very, very frequently, and it's obvious that we get this picture up just how much use it gets. So, I went out this afternoon right before I came here, there were three dogs out there with families moving around, and there's a little bit of grass out there, there's a whole lot of sand out there, and there would be a whole lot of mud if it was raining. So, I, I don't think it would take a whole lot of expense off of this board to maybe do some opportunities for enhancements there. I've spoken with actually several people out there of what we can do from, and here's, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but here's the things I'm hearing from them. There's no place for shade, so I think there's a temporary shelter that's been set up. I'm not sure who did that, whoever on the side there in the picture. So, they were asking for shade, potentially trees, maybe of a small structure. The biggest complaint that I've heard is water, there's no water there. And the people there said they just walk over to the river and get it out and bring it back over, and it's, it'd be nice to have a water source there. And you can see by the lack of grass how much effort, or how much use it gets. So, I am in the landscape business, I don't know if we can ever get grass to grow except in the unused portions, but I think we can do better than this as a county with little, minimal cost. Maliffy's mentioned to me about maybe setting up a committee maybe to study this and maybe come back with some solutions. I'm comfortable with that, I just wanted to have this discussion on the board. And I would like to throw out there also, if there is any landscaping to be done, I will personally donate the trees to create some shade there. I have stock for my company, so I'll donate those. There's also the Highlands Dog Park, they, they don't have any grass, they use 100 percent mulch. And there is a massive pile of mulch that I'm standing on here when I take this picture, and it's just sitting there, it looks like it's been there for a long time. So, I don't know if, I don't, if mulch, evidently Highlands uses it, so it's not bad for dogs, but I don't know if mulch is the correct thing or not, but that's inexpensive, that's something we can literally get for free from some tree companies. If you'd like to help address this, I'm...
Well, I just, um, yeah, I'm Kim Maliffy, I know all of y'all, it's wonderful to be here, thank you. And I did, I had an opportunity to talk to someone who, the Gainesville Florida area is over the whole, you know, park, active park situation, and they, they recommended exactly what you were saying, the very star is mulch, that's free. And, and then absolutely getting in shade, and it's a very generous offer on your part to provide some seed trees, that'd be wonderful. And he mentioned too, that like you did, the dirt is sand and mud, and it's almost impossible in any, it's like a soccer field, it's almost impossible to keep grass on it. And he said the only way to do that, in expensive scenarios, they actually embellish the soil, apparently, they put implements into it, I guess the golden vitamins, and bring it out. But if we're ever to have any grass in there, we think it would take an irrigation system, which again, that's not that expensive either, as long as they're running a water line over for water, spigot for water. So, down along the line there, that would be something to be thinking about, to maybe budget for in the year up, to, you know, something to improve. But you really do have a lot of people who will work with the realtors, and they'll specifically ask them, if you ask the board of realtors, they will say, yes, we have people ask, please take us by your dog park, it's that important to us. That's a social place for our community to meet, and it's, it's a good, it's a great place to meet and exchange ideas and just be neighbors. So, the water is absolutely the number one issue, and pass that shade, and getting some mulch, and then eventually hopefully getting some grass on there would be absolutely wonderful. I sincerely appreciate your consideration on this, and there really is a lot of other people in Macon County that do believe that if, geez, I would challenge Macon, I mean, Franklin Press to put a poll in there and ask, you know, how important is that to you? And I know you all care about your constituents and how we, how you spend their money, and so you're gonna wanna know that. But I really believe that, and certainly anybody that owns a dog would like to see some improvements there.
Chester, you have a comment?
Chairman, yes. There may actually be some obligation to, to do some work on that area that is, that's not covered with any kind of grass or otherwise. This property in here, some portion of it, is in very close proximity, if not covered by one of the conservation easements. And so, as you're getting ready to, to do anything out there, that conservation easement needs to be consulted. It restricts us from the ability to do some things and allows us to do other things in that area. So, as you're getting ready to, to do something, be very wise to look at that conservation easement. Now, the flip side of that is, is we have found that there are things that are prohibited by that conservation easement. We've contacted Clean Water Trust Fund, that oversees those easements and the enforcement of those. And if they think what you're proposing is a good idea, they'll waive it and let you do it. But you gotta get their permission, basically.
I don't foresee this being a very expensive project. If I can get a head nod from y'all, I'll be happy to grab this by the horns and do a little research about water lines, how close they are, see if we can get at least a spigot there.
Isn't that...
Look into some, some of the issues here.
Isn't that water right here or there? I mean, is it right up above that?
They're right up above that at the, at the water feature.
Yeah.
But now...
It's about a football field away from it, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
And, yeah, there would definitely, it would take some, running some water line down there, like Chester said, with that being the conservation easement, there might be some restriction on what you can do.
Yeah, it's a, it's a multi-page document, and most of those pages are things you may not do within a conservation easement. But again, my experience has been, if you've got something that's constructed and is not contrary to clean water concerns, they'd be good to work with and they'd waive some of those things.
So, are these folks gonna come back with a design, Mr. Chairman?
Well, what I would suggest is if y'all are in agreement, perhaps a little bit of interest in helping us repair this, y'all give me a head nod, I'll, I'll work with the Lippys and other interested parties to try and bring this to fruition, so.
They have that document, he's talking about its problems quarter, yes, there they have it, and...
Yeah, there are probably about, there's probably 15 or 20 separate conservation easements along the, the Greenway, and I can get to the, the one in question.
I'm pretty familiar with that document, it, most of it concerns plants, you know, that's the big thing.
Plants and taking, any kind of grading and that sort of thing.
If it's a bra, don't pay it, that's all I can tell you. Don't rent the goats in and eat them like we done one before.
But I, but I would tell you, my experience has been that they're pretty easy to work with if they don't see what you're doing causing problem to waterfall.
What do you mean, my name is Charlie.
I just, no, I mean, I just need a head nod from y'all, and let me report back, I just, while y'all are in agreement, we'll get with it, I'll work with the Lippys on it, and we'll try and get it done.
We have our next board meeting, problem board meeting, is next Tuesday, but we've gotta meet Friday.
We gotta meet that Friday.
If I could see Jimmy and Gary to live it after the meeting, I think I'd...
We're gonna be in next, at 4:30 next, in the problem's quarter. You gonna be in town?
I'll be here anyway, I guess. What was that time again?
4:30. You gonna, you gonna 4:00?
No, I hope not, I hear that.
4:30, I'll be... And Mr. James is a good resource person, man.
Comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
That's good, yeah, thank y'all, thank y'all for coming to my show.
We're not leaving yet.
Okay. All right, fireworks permit request. Presenting this old Edward Zan again.
Yes, this is very showing, one that the board approved, lots like last month, this one's a week later. We just need a action by the board directing that covenant to be issued.
We got a motion?
Got a motion.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion regarding opioid litigation.
Gentlemen, y'all probably have each heard a good bit of discussion through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners about wholesale litigation being filed in connection with the manufacturers and distributors of opioids by counties and municipalities across the country. Indeed, I don't know the precise number, but I'm thinking it's in the vicinity of 40 out of the 100 counties have already commenced litigation against opioid manufacturers and distributors here in North Carolina. Macon County really hasn't had a great amount of public discussion about this particular issue. I think the, the attitude, I've had a little bit of discussion with county manager about the issue, because the issue keeps coming up to get educated about or to hear about opportunities and what have you. And so, Derek and I have discussed it from time to time, and I think our thought had been a little bit of sort of a wait and see sort of thing to, to see whether this is something that we needed to be a part of or not. I'm not sure that I have the information necessary to recommend one way or the other right now. However, I did receive communication from an attorney in Winston-Salem that is working with one of the large consortium of attorneys, basically indicating that Macon County in particular probably is disproportionately affected by this particular opioid problem, probably greater than most county, the average county anyway in North Carolina. I'm gonna go from recollection here, my recollection may be flawed, but I believe the indication was is that they figured we had, I believe it was roughly 34,000 residents, and based on the number of prescriptions written for opioids here in Macon County, it, for opioids for 30 to 60 days, prescription for 30 to 60 days is my understanding, there's been enough prescriptions written that 91 percent of our residents in Macon County get a prescription in one year of year. I know I didn't get one, so...
But, Mr. Chairman, we can speak to this, you know, we've been involved in, and this is my, just my thought, we was with a lot of counties, Western Carolina from the district. What they're doing, they're, each county is individually, this is not a class action suit, each county individually, and what, and the counties you speak of, you see very few rural counties involved, and you know why. Number one is, you see who they're suing, and I, like I told them with our, when you see Purdue Pharmacy as one of the ones being at the top of the list, then we might, I would consider supporting getting involved. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that, that the county does not get involved in this suit, this suit's gonna be a long drawn out. These pharmaceutical companies have hired, literally hired everybody, every lawyer from the EA, now works for pharmaceutical companies, they wrote the law. The ones that wrote the law now work for pharmaceutical companies, so this is gonna be a long drawn out, a fire. The larger counties, that's the ones who's mostly involved. They have not only the resources, but I think if, if, once we see that some of these large, Purdue Pharmacy by far is the largest manufacturer of opioids, there's nobody close. And, so, as we, as we move forward, I would recommend that what the attorney says we, that there's a lot of things that, that we gonna have to see happen before there's any, and what they're suing for is, you have to go through the expense, you think that whatever the expenses cost to Macon County, that's what they're after, is to get reimbursement to the county. And, but at this point, and that's basically what was said by the attorney from Association, basically you have to judge for yourself, you know, where you're gonna be able to be basically you have to judge for yourself, where you're gonna be involved in this kind of lawsuit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other this evening, I'm here really more to communicate to you that there's an attorney that was interested in at least bringing, coming to you and making a presentation as to whether it would be advisable or not advisable from his standpoint for you to get involved in this litigation. Now, I understand he's coming with the idea of trying to get you to sign up for this litigation because that's what he does.
I would save his time and trouble, Mr. Chairman. Right now, you see one of these big, large counties like Wake, Matlinburg, they're all in this, Wake, Matlinburg, Orange, Durham, Pitt, these large counties that's really putting funds behind it. When they start collecting, we can ride the coattail, it won't cost us hardly anything. But until that time comes, I just don't see where Macon County's gonna leapfrog those counties.
And that's what I told him, as I told him, I said, if the board was inclined to hear your presentation, they would invite you, if the board felt like they might be wasting your time, they probably would not invite you.
Now, next Wednesday, next Wednesday we'll be in Raleigh to hear the secretary and attorney general, Steens, speak to this. And where the actual lawsuits are, that's another hard piece of information that's hard to come by. So, so I would, for right now, it's just my recommendation, because I'm gonna do whatever, I'm sure that he's very knowledgeable and knows the situation, but I'd just like to take a wait and see attitude with these large counties.
I'm comfortable with that, anybody else have a different opinion? Anybody?
I'll let him know. Thank you.
Even at Robert C. Carpenter Building, Chester again?
Yes. Derek has been working with the right way agent with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I know other people have been working with him as well. If you haven't seen, taken a minute to look at what got accomplished when we got a red light put in down at the Ingalls, Robert C. Carpenter Building. What an incredible improvement down there and thanks to some hard work from people in the county as well as the BOP. But they're wanting to make that better down there. They're gonna try, I don't know if you've noticed going into the Robert C. Carpenter Building, there's a big bump there as you go in, they're gonna try to get all of that working a little bit better down there. They're also, I understand, talking about having a, what is it, a deceleration lane?
Yeah.
Coming in down there as well, and gonna do some work with drains. But basically, they're gonna need a temporary construction easement, temporary drainage easement from the county. If you look at the, the offer, they've offered $7,200, $75 for those temporary easements. You'll see two drawings attached. The first drawing is a little, you'll see circled in yellow, that is the area right at the entrance of the Robert C. Carpenter Building. And that is the construction easement, they're just gonna need to be able to work in that area. I called the right way agent yesterday, I said, does this mean we're gonna be blocked? He said, no, there will never be a time more than 15 minutes where there's total blockage at the entry and exit of that, they will manage it in such a way that it will not block for any more than 15 minutes at a time. The second page is a little further south down 441, and that is a drainage easement that's circled in yellow. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and second, are you in favor?
Aye. What you figure E fix gonna do is start putting the vider down in the road.
I would think about lowering that speed limit from that stoplight on up the hill. If you can get them to do that, there will be some real value in that.
Can we get a motion to approve, you can send agenda unless somebody has something they'd like the board to discuss?
Just, I have one quick thing, just to ask the county manager if he would, I've got several calls, I don't know if you gentlemen know this or not, but the cell tower that we approved a long, long time ago, Windy Gap, Verizon was gonna put the service all the way down through the Olive Alley and down through Cali. Well, they never done nothing. They put their equipment there, there's no meter there, they even took the light off the tower. I did call and he contacted Verizon, they said, well, maybe next month or so, it's been how long?
How many years?
I'd say, two years, three years. Verizon's equipment's on the tower, but there's no meter there, there's no, they've never activated it since it went, so this is a second tower that we approved for them to do that, there's still nothing on the tower at Rainbow Springs. And the whole purpose was to help serve Maconians. So whoever we need to contact from Verizon to find out, you remember Verizon came, gave a big presentation, and we approved that, and so now there's not even a meter there. They even took the light off the top of the tower, so...
They did.
Yeah, I mean, they, somebody needs to...
Its address is, if, some obligations, I believe, the tower owners, if they're not in use.
Did we approve that or did the town Franklin approve that?
No, I'll have to go back and look, seems to me.
I think we had to approve it too.
Yeah.
I think we did.
They did?
I think so, yes.
I'm pretty sure that town, that's the town.
Or Windy Gap.
Yeah.
Maybe that one, but the one in Rainbow Springs.
Yeah, the one in Rainbow Springs is definitely on ground.
But I think, I think we had, we talked about this.
I know we approved, I know when we were talking about the attachments to the courthouse, that that tower was brought up.
But I don't think he matters, who owns the tower. The fact is Verizon's got their stuff on it, not servicing the folks. They're up in ATG, the people that's supposed to be servicing. Somebody needs to call Verizon and say, what's the deal? If you can get a hold of somebody, they can make a decision.
That's the kicker.
That's the whole, that's the end of the story.
I'll be glad to see where I find that.
I don't believe whatever the problem is, that's a power body, so it can put the regulations in.
No, I think they can check that out, I think that's fine. It's about the money, I guess, I don't know.
Pour back to us, Derek. Pour back to us.
And Joe Adams has some information.
All right, back to you, consent agenda. Looking for motion to approve unless somebody has something they'd like to move.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have some appointments, I serve on the Highlands TDC board. We've had a little bit of movement, I'm gonna read these off to you. Jerry Moore, who owns Killwinds in Highlands, is gonna be the small accommodations manager, he also has several small rentals. Jack Austin with Old Edward's Inn has recommended the place as a large accommodations representative. Bill Futral out of Scaly is gonna be an at-large member. Laura Huerta, who owns Lakeside Restaurant in Highlands, will be an at-large member. Tony Potts, branch manager of Integra in Highlands, will be the Chamber of Commerce's representative on the TDC. And Brian, Commissioner Brian Steeler will be the town of Highlands representative, as well as me. So we just need a motion to approve these. And Mike, you're gonna have to help me out on the dates, and you might have to give a box of teak to work these out, they had to do some switching, I know. Because the state required, and the state says who sits on this board and what they represent, but to make it work, they had to do some flopping around that the chamber did to get these names, so. We get a motion to approve these, I recommend them all.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The second one was Franklin and Hala Tourism and Development Commission, there's a little letter from Linda Harbuck, and it states that Linda Sterrett would like to be reappointed and Ron Haven does not want to serve another term. So I make...
I make motion that's the approval of...
So Linda Sterrett will be reappointed for another term, and then the Franklin and Hala TDC is gonna be looking for someone to replace.
And we got invited at this.
Haven, I think Haven's large accommodations.
I think those agreements are up for renewal, are they not, first of July?
June, do you remember? Derek, we just talked about that, the agreements? I think we're gonna put them all up in June.
Franklin, I think we were gonna have for June, if I remember correctly.
Those are the chamber agreements.
I love them, I'm not sure.
That is June. All right, so we got the motions to approve, that's presented, so I've got, gotta look at for replacement for Ron Haven. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. My understanding is that there is a need for a closed session to discuss the potential acquisition of real property. Correct? Mr. Attorney?
It is correct, and to preserve the attorney's privacy.
I don't foresee us taking any action coming out, Mr. Manager.
Depends on...
So I may take that how you all want to proceed. Sorry, media.
Okay.
I'll also, before we go into...
I think unless you're going to direct the acquisition, a decision to acquire tonight, it'll probably be a discussion, a negotiation and receiving advice from the attorney.
So we'll just, we'll not take action tonight, I hope, we'll move on.
You want to take action or not?
It just depends on how you all want to proceed.
Let's, I'm gonna recommend we not, we'll discuss it and then we'll... And before we take a motion to go into closed session, I believe, there's a member of our audience tonight, but I understand that this is her last meeting with us. Of course, she goes to have a kid and I think she's moving on to potentially greener pastures. You've been with us seven years now, I think?
I've been.
About as long as I've been a commissioner, maybe a little bit longer.
I predate you. I sure do, yeah. I like to say it's newspaperly May 17th.
I remember so well when you came in here, one of my very first meetings in here, and you walked across and we were asking where you're from, Commissioner Bell, and you said, you're not from here, but you got here as quick as you could.
I got here as fast as I could.
And you agreed. We're gonna miss you.
Appreciate it.
I personally, I think you've done an outstanding job and no matter what, social media or anything else says, I think you've been very impartial, and there's times that I don't watch, you've been more impartial than myself.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So I think, we're gonna miss you, Brittany, and we wish you the best of luck anywhere you go.
Thank you.
And I will personally send a big round of applause.
Yeah, about that pizza, I think you said you liked that, I'm sorry.
No, Nick said he's gonna take you out.
I gotta go downstairs with the board life.
Get a motion to go into closed session. So move.
Did you see the squirrel walks when you had the dog park tonight?
I did.
Damn, your name was, you didn't look at it.